Okay. Hello, good morning sa tanan. Since 9:30 na mag-start tas ato ang MRP. Sa atong mga visitors karoon, 30 minutes before the session, we'll have our MRP. No 30 minutes. Doon na'tay mga modules din ha, pwede niyong makakuha mo. Pwede niyang dalon pa uli, noh, ang atong mga modules. Okay, to start with, shall we look up together in prayer? Let us bow down our heads. Heavenly Father and our Almighty God, the God of creation, the God of salvation, and the God of provisions, God of protection. We look up to you, oh God, because we can do nothing without you, but we give to you our total dependence. We thank you for preserving our lives throughout the week. Thank you for sustaining us by your grace for meeting all our needs, to protect us, Lord, from any harm, and to give us strength and good health. So we have come this far of our lives because of your divine providence. And our honor will thank you for the privilege once again to learn together a lesson that would benefit each one of us. We ask your divine wisdom to be upon each one of us, and we recognize, we welcome your holy presence in our midst. This is our prayer, with so much thanksgiving of hearts, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen. Okay. Last week mura og na-advance tas atong lesson. Doon dito sa atong murag 9 ug tentos ya, so mura atong ibalik karoon din he. And anyway, it's all about God's perspective on every family. So muna atong lesson, mga 14 lessons ni siya. It means nga ang pamilya, ang anak kita karoon, ang ato ang marriage life, it is not our own invention or idea, but it is God's idea. Okay? So, when we got married, when we establish our family, we are participating the plan and will of God in our lives, so we are blessed. Okay, so we are now in Lesson 7. Helen Meiren said, "The great marriages are partnerships. It cannot be a great marriage without being a partnership." So, ang mga kami niyon, ang ginatawag strong or great nga kami niyon, masana siya, ang ginatawag nga partnership. Dili pwedeng mahimo nga great nga marriage kung wala'y partnership. Samara sa giingon, noh, sa panaltihon nga, it takes to, to, tango. Kaya kung dun na'y masayog tango, nga nag-inusara, mura siya nagbuang. Pero doon na sa'yo paris, hastang ninduta lang taon. So diyaas kami niyon ang ka-effort sa relasyon ang asawa ra, o ang bana ra, o ang asawa la, awala, noh, kimpang siya, pero silang duha, perting liguna, noh, sa maonga kami niyon. So our lessons today nagkaingon benefits or the benefits of intimacy in marriage. No, ang mga benepisyo sa ginatawaga intimate, close nga kami niyon. Ngano di ay, doon na ba di ay kami niyon nga dili intimate? Yes, di ba, daghan. Permero, noh, ang permero sa pagminyo, noh, close kaayo, kanunay nagkadulog ang bana o gasawa. Nagdugay after many years, ang ilan na lang mga bed nagdulog. Dohanay bed sa isa ka kwarto. Nagkadugay, nagdulog na lang 'yung kwarto, si pikas kwarto, pikas kwarto pa ng isa. Mananang nganungyan na man. Subot pasabot nga, dun ay mga marriages nga dili intimate. Ang plano sa ginoo, noh, kaniniginaw, till death do us part. Muna siya, noh, kaya ang ato ang ginatawag na pagminyo, wala'y pagminyo o wala'y relasyon, wala'y commitment. Obitaw diha, noh, ang pinaka-sentros sa willing supremon niyon sa man. Noh, katong mga aydo-aydo din ha, exchanging of vows motay pinaka-sentros kasal. No, abin nila ang sentros kasal, katong ingon na ang slimnizer, "You may now kiss the bride," dili tumawoy. Noh, katong pag-aydo-aydo ginimo, o niya ang una witness ato, mawang Diyos, dili ang iyong ninuugnila, ikaduha na lang na sila. Iya na kaseryo, so ang ginatawag na kami niyon. So ang ato ang kuandre, kininga lesson nag remind ka na'to, noh, nga ang atong kami niyon must always be intimate. Okay, muna ay atong ipanumpaan. Okay, number one. Kun ang kami niyon intimate, o sa may resulta, gina-ginto nga healthy life, healthy life. Okay, so ang statement diha nagkaingon, married people tend to be healthier, live longer, have more wealth and economic assets, and have more satisfying sexual relationships than single or cohabiting individuals. Ma-agree ba tani? So dili ni siya pag criticize katong mga single mother or mga single people, pero gikompara ra siya, di ba? Ang married people, o sa man, healthier, ngano healthy man? There is someone to talk to, to share with, di ba? Muna inindot ka'y kong ginatawag nga couple, kay partnership. Noh, muna nga diyaas sa pagminyo na'to, pangitaon na'to ang compatible na'to. Noh, sa ta compatible, parehas mo kurso, parehas mo halos edad, parehas mo religion, para di mo mas big dibate, parehas mo culture, parehas mo siya compatible, pero wala mapoya na kaperfect. Ang nindot pod, idil ninyo ang inyong mga incompatibilities. Muna ay nindot. Okay, healthy, noh, tend to be healthier. Ang resulta, di can live longer. Kung healthy, di, mas taas ang kinabuhay, mag-uban og ginatawag nga taas nga panahon. Og have more wealth and economic assets. Noh, kaya ang iyahang panulon doon sa lalaki o dres babae, hiipuno nila, noh, himong mga conjugal properties, di, mas daghan sila og ginatawag nga wealth. Okay, and have more satisfying sexual relationships than single or cohabiting individuals. So, it results to healthy life kung intimate ang ginatawag na marriage. And then, take note, close relationship with the loved ones results to a healthy lifestyle. Kun close imo relasyon sa imo ang mga loved ones, ang resulta healthy lifestyle. Nganaman. Kaya kun ikaw, tin ka nga ah, magbisyo ka, maunay, na imo badlung nimo, imong loved ones. Huy, ayaw na, bad na, dili na maayos imo ha, noh, makadaot na sa lawas. Makadaot na si'mong pamilya, na imo badlung nimo, ay tama dahil noh, then ma-maintain nimo ang healthy lifestyle. Tungod kay close kasi imo ang loved ones. Noh, kanang uban nga dili close sa loved ones, sigaway-away. Uban gani, mukuan, moritalit sila, noh, maghubog-hubog, mag-rebuild eh. Kaya nga man, tungo sa loved ones, noh, ka kanang pag minahalay as a family nawala. Pero close relationship, kada sulte sa isa, kaloved ones niya mahalaga, noh, muna, ay tama, noh, di dili ay kumagbinuang, kaya makadaot na ako. Okay, so, close relationship with the loved ones, it will results to healthy lifestyle. Na imo badlung na'to. Noh, kung walat na imo badlung na'to, gipasaglan ka na, maunay pinaka-miserable. Pero kun dun ay pay imo badlung bitaw ni mo, pasalamat ka, kailunin mo badlung nimo. Noh, gigamit si ginong imo badlung nimo, palangga ka, kay gibalong ka, pero kanawa na imo badlung nimo, that is a miserable life. So, ang pradigalsan, noh, diyaas sa Luke chapter 16, sa mukhang siguro siya nga dagha imo badlung niya, iyang papa, iyahang pamilya, ah, nag-inusara siya, nagkinabuhay siya, kanawatawag na wild living. Ah, dito na tilawan niya, whining badlung niya, o sinaitabo pag kami miserable has kinabuhay. So pasalamat ta, noh, muna ato ang palanggaon, ang ato ang pamilya, member sa pamilya, ang ato mga parientit, na nadiha kay mga loved ones na siya, maunay mag-maintain si imo ang healthy lifestyle. Muna ikaw pod, kita ni imo ang loved ones nga gabino ang badlunga pod. Badlunga pod, si hostin na maay maghihimo, noh, magbinadlungay tama tag isa. No, we review each other, gitang alanta na. Okay. Ikaduha, kung intimate ang marriage, ikaduha, children have better emotional health. Ado na sila'y maayon, noh, nga kitaw nga emotion, hininduman na'to. We are emotional beings. Kinahalan ang atong mga emotion, healthy. Okay, children generally do better emotionally and academically when they are raised into parent families. Ado na'y maayon nga emotion, ang anak nga na-rise up siya sa two-parents family. Nganaman. Tungod kay kung two-parents family, ado na'y model sa masculinity ng mawang father, og ado na'y model sa femininity ng mawang mother. So dili magkaroon ng identity crisis ang bata kung ang iyahang parents kompleto. Kay dun ay father image, o dun ay mother, di ba? So, usahay, noh, kini mga, naka-observe mo nga dun ay babae iya nga, naminyo ug tigulang na. Ang uban pasulte ni counselor na deceive siya sa iyahang feeling. Abin niya og mahal niya kaayo, dili ay ang pagpalangga lang si sa parents niyang ipanita. Nganaman. Tungod kay nagtubo siya ng wala'y father image. Wala siya kabaluhan na, pero, wala siya kabaluhan ay na iyang problema. Pero, ang realidad tungod na ng vacuum, tungo sa wala ang isa ka image din ha. Sumasmulahan ang anak nga na-rise up siya sa duha ka parents. Nganaman, dun ay model alang sakans kung sa anak ka babae, dun ay model og ginatawag nga masculinity. Dun ay pagmahal kay ka sa amahan. Og kung lalaki pod, dun na siya model of masculinity nga iyahang sundon. O babae pod siya, dun ay model of ginatawaga femininity, umayang mama. Og ang pagpalangga osap sa father, na day father image, kompleto, di ba? So muna siya ang kanindot. Pero sa atong mga pangitabo karoon, o alang pod sa magitaw mga single parents, nawala ta na ginto nga criticize, okay, kun naitabo ang iyahang anak, ang ginoo gracious of kaayo. You just humble down before God, ginoo muna akong sitwasyon karoon, tabangi ko Lord sa pag-rise up, noh, sa kong anak nga despite nga dun ay kulang, pero ma-rise up na ko siya in a godly, noh, manner. Just humble down before God, og pangayoa ang grasya si Gino. God is gracious, muna ay atong pasalamatan. Kay ang tong, noh, our God is a God of dili lang si can chance of, but God of many chances. Imanan na ang ginoong ato ang silbihan, wala't nagialagaran. Okay. Family is a character molding center. Pwede pasabot, ang pamilya maoy factory, sa ginatawag nga, ah, children toward blessed attitude. So, o sa ka-importante ang pamilya, mura siya og factory nga imold niya ang maayong attitude. Labin ako ang isa ka pamilya, Kristuhanon or godly family, hastang ninduta, noh, di ba? Kanang ginatawag nga, ah, imo siya imold iyang attitude, diyaas sa Bible bitaw, Matthew chapter 5, o siya gisgotan diha. Kun 'yung basahon din ha, sa in ibing verse yun, dun ay mga sign main title. O siya title, beatitude. Beatitude. Kun atong tinamba nun pag translate sa Bisaya, noh, ang beatitude simple rakayo, beautiful attitude. So, kun ang pamilya godly, o niya gituluan ang bata sa ginatawag nga attitude nga pleasing in the sight of God, then ang pamilya maoy factory sa blessed attitude. Or beautiful attitude, diha sa, nga na sa mga kabataan. Okay, third, ang resulta sa intimate marriage, resulta sa mga bata, stable mental health. Couples and children have more advantages when it comes to mental stability. An intact family is strong. Ah, intact good, di ba? In yun yun, there is strength. So, kun intact ang family, then intact pod ang mga anak niindot kaayo. Good siya, so, ang mental, ang panguna-una, healthy. Isasalakong problema karoon, noh, tibo o kalibutan, mental health, di ba? So, kung intact ang family, then dun ay ginatawag nga protection ang mga kabataan. Batok na iniing ang mga klasing at trahiyya, noh, nga nag-aabot. Okay, feeling of insecurity tremendously affects man's whole personhood. Kanang feeling of insecurity, grabe na siya makaapikto sa pagkatawo sa tao, si sa kabata. Ka na ang feeling of insecurity, grabe na siya makaaficto sa pagkatawo sa tao, si sa kabata. No, kalibitan, dun ay ginatawag nga vacuum sa kasing-kasing, no, dun ay siya gipangita. Na di siya kasabot, o sa iyang gipangita. Dun ay feeling niya o security nga dun ay siya gipangita, pero usahon niya pagpangita. Paglantao niya sa kuwan, no, sa iyang kinabuhay si iyahang family, mo na ma hitabo. So, sa una, no, katong back to kampasiguro, early two thousand. Diba si, katong artista si kuwan, si ah Mark Anthony Fernandez, na preso, o sa i problema, drugs, nagdrag addict. Kung magdrag addict ka, ang, ang, ang sunod na na, maging dealer guilt pod ka, na maging poser pod ka. Kaywa may sustain si emohang, si emong bisyo. So, ang mga tao nga, huh, kaluoy, ngano nina man si kuwan, ngano nina man? Si gintres up, si gintres up, na dun ay nakakuminto, alangan. Alangan o sa himo on niya nga, kisika ni mama ni Mark Anthony, si Alma. Alangan, mo at to si Mark Anthony siyang mama, ang gikapuyu siyang mama, dilin iyang papa. Mo at to pod si siyang papa, gikapuyu si iyang papa, di pod iyahang mama. Di, o sa iyo resulta na, di isa kasi pa siya pagulingon, dito siya drugs. No, kay para mo ay emohatag niya og temporary nga peace of mind. Pero dilig pod, ah, temporary na god. No, so, iya na ang naga kaitabo. Pero, ato lang nanggihisgutan, dilin ipagataki sa o sa mga sitwasyon sa uban. Ato lang gilantao, no, para sa mga ah, ah, musugod pa, makasugod og tama. O katong naanasit sitwasyon, maka hatag tao korreksyon, pag humble down si Ginoo, Lord, tabangi ko, mauna man good ni Lord. Ah sige, tabo tabang good ang Ginoo, tabo tabang good siya, ano, no kay ang Ginoo, ah kapila kay gayo niyang mga katawan, nag, nagrebuild eh sa iya, pero iyang forgiveness grabe 'yung kaayo. So iya, naka gracious and loving ang Ginoo. Ang ato alang ibalik na'to, ang ato ang pagkinabuhay as couple, as marriage, as a family, katong according to the perspective of God. No, which is pleasing ka na sa iyah, sumuna ang ato ang tumong dinhe. Okay, children who see their parents closely, closely love each other, enjoy intimacy, is a great antidote against mental sickness. Kung ang mga bata, mga anak, labin akani mga yangtins, kung nakita nila ang ilang parents nga loving kaayo, naging gugma ay, ang grabe ang security silang kalingkasing. No, morabit tao sila og naa sila'y, grabe nga, nakasandal si rasperder. Nganaman, tungod kay ligon, kaayo kay nagminala ilang papa o mama. Pero maka witness sila nga sige lagaway ilang papa o mama, ang insecurity pod nila, grabe ang kasing-kasing. Yung sila nga usahon na lang ni magbulag kung papa o mama, asaman ko pa ingon, asan ko pa ingon? Kay sige lagaway, no kay, ang sunod sige ngaway, magbuwag ay mag yun. So kung ka, kita nila nga sige lagaway, sige away, ang insecurities lang kasing-kasing, grabe mo creep in, grabe mo creep in. Usahon na lang, asaman ko, kung magbulag si papa, asaman ko, diba? Pero intact kaayo, grabe ang security nga naasa ilaha, no, si lahang mind. Okay, so that is, ginatawag nga mental health. So, children who see their parents closely love each other, enjoy intimacy, is a great antidote against mental sickness. Okay, so, niara no, mga ginikanan, ang tambal, no, ang pamaaging nga maging close, ang maging healthy ang mind sa'tong mga anak, ipakita na'to ang atong pagminahalay as husband and wife. Tinuon nga pagminahalay, no, ipakita, no? Na i, sa, na i, na i time nga, imong ihag, ang imong asawa, kisan nimo, ipakita nimsong anak, kay iya na kalab, nimo imong asawa, ina kalab niya iyang bana, ah, mutan, ah, magkatawan na ang kuwan, ang maghilasan ng imong, imong anak, pero ang security nga ilahang napundas sa ilahang kasing-kasing, grabe kaayo. Yehe, ako mama, kuwan kaayo, oh papa, no, ah, ka na intimate kaayo, mo na i maghatag sila og, security. Okay, couples intimacy maintains fresh atmosphere in the family. Wow, no, couples intimacy maintain fresh atmosphere in the family. So, ang mga key people or person for a healthy and strong family naasa ginatawag nga parents. That's why, back to basic, let us ah check ang ato ang marriage, no, marriage life, are we still intimate to each other, to sa'to ang mga spouses? No, kung tili, ibalik yun, ibalik, no, ang iyong ginatawag nga intimacy, kay mo ma ginasiya, ang dapat. So katong kanta nga, kahit maputiin ang buhok ko, hinaut nga, tinuot ginasiya. Hangtod wala na, ah, hangtod wala na'y buhok, mo agi hapon. Mo ma na ang vows nga atong gibuhan, no? Katong gikasalta, tubangan si Ginoo nga may unang witness. Yes, it takes God's grace, dilig ni siya ka isturya lang nga, iya na ka isin, imong isulit, pastor, yes. Kinahala na'to ang grasya si Ginoo. Lord, tabangi me, empower me si emong grasya nga, mamintinaw ang intimacy, no, sa among mga spouses, kay mo resulta kini og, kining healthy nga panguna una, healthy nga emotion, og malayo sa ginatawag nga ah, mental sickness or anything nga maka ah damage sa family. Okay, tungod kay, ato hininduman, o sa gani ang gikamada sa Ginoo, o sa gani ang gikamada og kaayo ba, bulabugon pod ni Satanás. Kay ang Ginoo maayong nagestablish sa pamilya, bulabugon pod ni Satanás. That's why, no, magbantaita, magbantaita, nadili ta, magiging bikima niya. So we always pro ah claim God's protection, no? Ka na ang divine encapsulation ba, that is always my prayer, divine encapsulation. What is encapsulation? The word capsule? O sa sulod diha, tambal, encapsulate siya, kay para pagtumart, dilipait? Kay kung wala na siya, dilip, pwidi, dilip makayang imnon, sugi encapsulate siya. Kita usap, atong ikleba ang divine encapsulation si Ginoo sa tua, every day, every day, sa atong mga anak individually. Kay para ang target sa kaaway, no, mo na atong shield, nadili makaafix sa tua. So we always look up to God. Let's pray. Salamat Lord sa lesson among na learn, nining nga kabuntagon. Salamat kay ang amo ang kaminyoon, ang amo ang pamilya. Imo kini Ginoo nga plano, imo kining idea. Oga kami Lord, gan nga nagminyo, oga dun ay pamilya karoon, nagparticipate kami si emohang plano og kabubog pod. Oga ang realidad Ginoo, daghang mga crisis Lord, among giatubang. O sa struggle kami Lord sa intimacy sa o ang marriage life. O sa Ginoo sa among family, dun ay mga problema yun nga nag-aabot. Apan Lord, rest assured kami nga, tabangan ni mo kami sa pagpreserve ni ini, tungod kay imo man kini Ginoo nga plano. Himo alam ang kami nga, depende ka na kanimo, og ang dapat namong himo on Lord, among himo on Ginoo. We have to do our best and you will take care the rest Ginoo nga biyan sa among capacity to handle Ginoo. Amo gi claim Lord, ang imong divine encapsulation Lord God, sa mata, satanang nga mga bana, satanang nga mga asawa, og satanang nga mga anak Ginong Diyos, sa among mga family Lord, ta sa tagsa. Amo ka nagiclaim Ginoo, himo ang strong among family Ginoo. Maging model among family Ginong ato sa uban, ang pamilya nga imong pagkakahimutan. Thank you Lord. Nagaga, apo kami karoon, ang palay ni mong tabang wisdom, ibubuo ni mo Lord si imong mga anak, sa mga legislators Lord, nga maghimot silang session karoon, hinaut kay ikaw, magpatalawala kanila, magagiya Ginoo. Aron Ginoo sa dugang nga pag-progress ogan sa municipality sa Ipin ogan. Ang mga bisnors ka niya karoon, hinaut Ginoo nga madris usap, kanila mga gikinhalan karoon ang amahan. We will invest to you, our lives into your mighty hand for your safekeeping and continuous blessing. Kili mong pagampu, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Maayong butagsatanan.
Good morning everyone. The sixty-fifth regular session of this Sangguniang Bayan is about to commence. May I request everyone to be placed in silence and let's all stand for the entrance of the official maes of this Sangguniang Bayan. The presiding officer, our very own Vice Mayor, the Honorable Ramseth Troy DiOlegario, with our Sangguniang Secretary, Madam Estelita Igia.
Hello, ah, good morning to each and everyone, the sixty-fifth regular session is hereby called to order. I may standing for the singing of the Philippine national anthem.
Hello.
Madam Secretary for the roll call.
Ah, good morning to each and everyone. Ah, it's obvious Mr. Chair that only six are present. Ah, the required quorum is seven, so there is no quorum yet.
Okay, um, considering that there are only six members present, the Chair would like to declare a fifteen-minute recess, ah, while waiting for the others to come. Um, acknowledging the presence of the Honorable Ian Glenn Sabihan and the Honorable Diane Catherineya, the Chair would like to declare that there is a quorum session be back to order. Um, Mr. Floor Leader, for the adoption of the order business.
Mr. Chair, at this juncture, may I move for the adoption of the order of business for today's regular session?
Any seconded motion for the adoption. Julie seconded by the Honorable Sabihan, discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, we are now on the visitors' hour. I move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our visitors.
A rule suspended to accommodate our visitors for this morning?
First, visitor Mr. Chair, uh, is a national... Uh, is a teacher. Oh, what's this? Uh, Mr. Alister Kapasyo? 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 Now, for a National Search delegate for the BSP, Zamboanga Cibugay National High School, Pangi. The purpose in coming here, Mr. Chair, is to solicit for his travel to the National Search for 10 outstanding, uh, Boy Scouts of the Philippines.
Acknowledging the presence of the Honorable Juan Pablo Nueva, good morning.
Okay, good morning everyone. First of all, I would like to give thanks to all legislators for the support katong niage ngayon. When I was going to Korea, katong akong travel sa Korea, and I am here back again. Um, I am confident to say that I have well represented the municipality of Epeel and the province of Zamboanga Cibugay in the 25th World Scout Jamboree in Korea, as I have handled 40 scouts where I have showcased the beauty of Epeel and as well as the beauty of Zamboanga Cibugay. Now, I am here with the same purpose, to ask for your financial support, for I am going to attend the 2023 National Search for the 10 Outstanding Boy Scouts of the Philippines, where last Friday, I was one of the top two in the regional search for the 10 outstanding Boy Scouts of the Philippines. And this coming October 21, I will be traveling to Manila to attend the week-long interview, as well as the evaluations of my skills with regards to basic life support, um, life saving and other skills-related activity. So, once again, I am Alister Gato Judas Kapasyo from Zamboanga Cibugay National High School, and I am a participant of the National Search for the 10 Outstanding Boy Scouts of the Philippines. That would be all, Mabuy.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, clarifications, anything that you'd like to say? So, it's a pleasure of the body.
Sir, na baige, shell out ang local government that time when you went to Korea?
Um, yeah, yes, they... Well in fact, katong time nagsollicit po.
Aside, aside, atong solicitation dery?
Um, I believe si... At that time, we also go sa province, and then, yes, naghatagpo sila atong time. But then again, all gyod, dirigid to gikantay. Very big ang contribution sa municipality of Epeel atong time sa kung lahat.
Nakapisit napukakan mayor?
Wala pa, ang karoon wala pa.
Okay. Acknowledging the presence of the Honorable Shifmas Inasim. Okay, requesting anybody from the staff to kindly collect any amount come from the members of this august body.
During recess?
Okay. Sige sir, thank you. And good luck.
I think there are no more visitors, Mr. Chair. And we will proceed to the privilege hour. Any members of this honorable chamber who wants to avail the privilege hour? Please just raise your hand so that you will be recognized by our presiding officer, be it personal or collective matter. Anyone?
Okay.
No one wants to avail, Mr. Chair, the privilege hour?
Okay, may we proceed with the adoption, with the reading and the adoption of the minutes of the previous session?
Mr. Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session and moving for the approval of the same.
Okay, there's a motion to dispense with the reading and for the approval of the minutes of the previous session. Any seconded motion? Julie seconded by the Honorable Sabihan. Any discussion? Amendments, objection, any corrections? Hearing the motion is hereby approved. Madam Secretary for the reference of business.
Okay, for the reference of business calendar first reading, under the proposed ordinance, we have draft ordinance number 130, sponsored by Honorable Catherine Turalba, an ordinance creating the position of one utility foreman salary grade six, step one, under the middle, and appropriating funds thereof.
Mr. Chair, may I have the floor?
Yes, go ahead, Honorable Turalba.
I move for this ordinance number 130, an ordinance creating the position of one utility foreman salary grade six, step one, under the middle, and appropriating funds thereof. I so move and submit, Mr. Chair.
Any seconded motion for the approval of the ordinance? Julie seconded by the Honorable Sabihan. Discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chair, I move that this draft ordinance number 130 be set for second reading on the next regular session.
Seconded motion? Julie seconded by the Honorable Dampalan. Any objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved. This ordinance be calendered for second reading on the next regular session. Acknowledging also the presence of the Honorable Benifredoch Young. Good morning, sir. Madam Secretary.
Okay, item B, we have here, under our communications, the SK annual budget for CY 2023 of Barangay Logan.
Mr. Chair, let this matter be referred to the Committee on Appropriation.
You refer this matter to the Committee on Appropriations.
Item B, we have here the communication from Mr. Edmundo Sumatra, Medo Manager, addressed to the Chairman Committee on Market regarding the Executive Order Number 41 prohibiting the collection of past trophies on national roads, and urging the local government units to suspend the collection of any form of fees upon all types of vehicles transporting goods under section 153 and/or 155 of Republic Act 7160 or the Local Government Code. This office would like to solicit the SB in the interpretation of the said executive order to fully capacitate and enforce the collection scheme inside the market premises, particularly in relation to sections 28 and 29 of ordinance number 6-173-2003, otherwise known as the Market and Slaughter Code of Slaughterhouse Code or the Municipality of Epeel.
Mr. Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Market.
You refer this matter to the Committee on Market.
Item C, we have here the communication again from Mr. Edmundo Sumatra, Medo Manager, addressed to the Chairman Committee on Ways and Means, submitting the proposed rates for the revision of the Local Economic Enterprise Code to it, Market 1 and 2, proposed rental rates, miscellaneous fees, market entrance fees, and proposed rate for transfer fee.
Mr. Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means.
You refer this matter to the Committee on Ways and Means.
Item D, we have here a copy of the Executive Order Number 008 Series of 2023, an order institutionalizing the feedback mechanism of the local government unit of Epeel, and this needs as be resolution for adoption in relation to our LLA.
So, it's a pleasure of the body.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of Executive Order Number 008 Series of 2023, an order institutionalizing the feedback mechanism of the local government unit of Epeel, Zamboanga Cibugay.
Any seconded motion? Julie seconded by the Honorable Dampalan. Discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing the motion is hereby approved.
Item E, we have here the invitation from the DLG Regional Office for the awarding ceremony of the 2023 Local Legislative Award on October 25 at the Garden Arcade Hotel, Zamboanga City, for the Municipality of Epeel for being awarded as the most outstanding Sangguniang Bayan for the first to third-class municipality, garnering a score of 88.5 during the LLA Regional Validation.
Okay, congratulations, everyone, for your information. So, atong palakbakan, antanan. And encouraging everyone to, uh, attend any ceremony, no? Manginautang, kitantanan, naa. To receive this very prestigious award, uh, to be awarded by the Department of Interior and Local Government for Regional. Atire is barong tagalog for salaki ang filipiniana sa babae. Yes, the Honorable Ramos. Okay, thank you for that suggestion. Okay, next item.
Where the committee reports.
Before the committee report, Mr. Chair, may I move a five-minute recess? And relinquish this chair to our regular floor leader, the Honorable Benifredoch Young.
Thank you so much, Honorable Turalba. Five minutes recess. Five minutes recess. In session B, backboard.
Mr. Chair, for consideration.
Okay.
Our municipal budget officer is present today. We will give her the floor to discuss, of course, the budget of this, if there are some queries from this Sangunyang Bayan. I move for the suspension of the rules, Mr. Chair, to accommodate our municipal budget officer.
Okay, rule suspended to accommodate our municipal budget officer. Let's then, Mrs. Lauren Galin. Ma'am, good morning.
Today, because of the concern of Honorable Ramos, which I received yesterday at around 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So I asked the staff of Honorable Ramos if I can be here today. Para ma-explain nalang na ako, medyo ubay-ubay ang pangutana ni Concejal Ramos. Around 11 pages. Thank you, kayo, Sir Ramos. Nabrite dyan ko kayo, aning mga pamutana, ugitunan dyan gabiin, naabtan dyan ko midnight, nanitoon. Alright, so I'll start. What is your pleasure, Honorable Ramos? Ako siyang basahon ang imuhang concern. And then I'll answer it one by one.
Ikaw lang ay mabasa, di ikaw po'y answer.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I'll read everything. Observation, comments, and questions on proposed 2024 revenues, budget, and appropriation. Introduction. Before anything else, I would like to convey my congratulations to the Finance Committee and all officials, heads of departments, and employees who painstakingly work individually or as a group to have this 2024 proposed budget completed in time for the Sangunyang Bayan to deliberate and pass into law. Your efforts are truly appreciated. I have, however, a few observations and questions on the proposed budget, and given that most, if not all, the members of this chamber have also their own observations and questions, I will be very quick with mine, which will focus to items and figures which I believe are significant and material. Observation number one. I suppose that you must have been following the format of your presentation of the budget for quite a number of years. But seriously scrutinizing the budget this time, I wish to take exemption as to the format and presentation. As a whole, particularly the column for the current year, where actual and estimate are lumped into one amount. While I know that the actual is what was realized as of cut-off date, which I believe is June 30, 2023, we do not know how much it is really and how much is yet to be realized until end of the year. For example, on page 1 receipts program, item number 1, year-end surplus. It showed here that for the current year, actual and estimate is 18,290,126.99. So some questions will arise such as, question number 1. How much was the surplus as of June 30, 2023? The cut-off date and how much was added in the remaining semester, if any? To answer question number 1, of course, we cannot determine surplus by end of the semester. Surplus will be determined at the end of the fiscal year. The document you are looking at is what we call the Local Expenditure Program. And the other one is the Local Budget Preparation Form for the Economic Enterprise. Per LBM Local Budget Memorandum Number 87 dated June 9, 2023, Section 2.2.18, these are the documents that we have to submit to the Sangunyang Bayan for authorization. First, the budget, which is attached to the Local Expenditure Program, the budget message. The plantilla, which is a separate document. Statement of indebtedness, which is also a separate document. The AIP, our annual investment program, and the annual operating budget for economic enterprise. So atong nakita ni Honorable Ramos, duhaka document, the LEAP and the budget preparation form are two different documents. That's why makita nimo dito, lahi dyan siya. Because sa LEAP, summary siya. Summary, sa proposed budget for the general fund and the proposed budget for the economic enterprise. So kung mulan to ka dito sa LEAP, aning mga column, sir. Delete nimo maturees, ang number kay cash, cash, receipt program na siya. Walay expenditure program. Dito na nimo siya makita sa proposal, ang expenditure program. In your cited example, you are referring to the data in the Local Expenditure Program, caning 18 million. Particularly the receipt program, which explains all the receipts and income for fiscal year 2022 and 2024. Namagut siya comparison. 2022 is the actual year, 2023 is the current year, and in the 2023 first semester is actual, second semester remains to be an estimate. And the 2024 is the budget year. Na, sir, sir? Okay. Ang number three nga question is, how reasonable is the year's budget? Merigubahan ko, aning mga pamutana, sir. In my opinion, the proposed budget for fiscal year 2024 was based on the proposed approved by the Local Development Council Plan. Ugunsegi plan, mooy giaproprate. If you will ask me if it's reasonable, it's a very subjective question. Merag mahadlo ko muto bag, sir. But as budget officer, I'm just here to provide technical assistance to the local chief executive, depending on her trust and priorities. However, all budgetary requirements will be provided first, before any expenditure. So regarding the presentation of the LEAP versus the LBPF, the Local Budget Preparation Form, it has really a difference because LEAP is the summary of the general fund and economic enterprise, while the Local Budget Preparation Form is the specific, specific for economic and specific for general fund. Talking about surplus. It is the amount remains unspent after the end of the fiscal year that can be used or be sourced at other items or appropriation. It may be through supplemental budget. Muna atong ginahimo, kung at the end of the year, like 2022, ang surplus of 2022, mo'y atong gi-source supplemental 2023. And so if you look into the LEAP, sir, wala tay gueestimate of surplus. Ang naa sa column sa 2022, nga surplus is surplus for 2021, carry forward 2022. Sa naa sa 2023, surplus to siya sa 2022, beginning balance siya 2023. So wala na to siya giestimate, sir, ang surplus. Actual realize. Kung mayon'tang surplus, actual realized income minus actual expenditure. It can be surplus or deficit. On deficit, dagdakuang atong expenses over sa actual realize. Because budget only is an estimate, based on estimate. Pero sa actual realized income, dito atong bantayan. Kay dili 100%, usually ang estimate nga atong giset, marrealize dyan siya 100% collected. So sa presentation dito sa LEAP, makita nimo first semester, second semester. First semester, January to June is actual realized income and actual expenditure. Total estimate, i-minus nino actual, ang nabiliin mo't siya to be spent yet and to be collected yet. Delete pata kabalu, kung katong nabiliin, makolektaba to, o katupong nabiliin nga unspent, o fully utilized ba to. Nakabutan dili sa emun, sir. It is important because the estimated surplus at year-end forms a substantial part of total resources available, which is the basis of budget for expenditures. Again, we cannot estimate surplus. It's an actual realized income and expenditure before we can see if there's a surplus or if there is a deficit. Comparably, the budget proposal, natubag na nako't sir, no? Municipal economic is much more informative. Kay makita nimo dito sa local budget preparation form, ang actual na ay duhaka column, first semester, second semester. While sa LEAP lump, na, sir, no? Manay mo' concern. Nakalumpsiya, estimated and actual. Gi-add to, sir, ang amount na dito, gi-add ang surplus sa general fund, economic enterprise. And our economic enterprise, we have three. The market, the slouter, and the bus terminal. Ang question dari, what does the amount represent and intended to? How come it is not being spent till year-end? Kung naatay surplus, meaning it can be, it can be, ang atong actual realized is income is more than the estimate. Or it can be the actual realized income lower than the estimate, but our expenses is lower than the estimate. So naatay surplus, meaning unutilized, unimplemented nga program. Ng at the end of the year, like maintenance and operating expenses, delete manas siya continuing. At the end of the year, kanag mga expenses will revert back to general fund. Pero kung capital outlay, it will be treated as continuing, meaning mahumanrong tuiga, mocontinue siya the next years to come. Muna siya.
Ma'am Ling, pwede ko mabating?
Yes, ma'am.
Na lang ko i-clear.
General Valdivian.
Na lang ko i-clear about surplus, para mas ano. Caning surplus nga term, magawas na siya every.
End.
Oo, pagcraft of annual budget, or naapod na siya nga term surplus, magawas kung supplemental.
Ah, kung supplemental, magawa siyang surplus if ang source surplus, out of surplus. Usually, ang atong source sa supplemental surplus gitsiya. Kay wala man tay additional estimated income anang beginning of the year. Kay di man ta kadugang, og estimated income sa giestimate ni treasurer anang annual, kung pa marrealize ang first estimate niya. So usually, ang surplus the prior year, source gina siya sa supplemental the following year.
Kasi because ga-craft of budget before December, manang magawa siya ng surplus nga term. Merag additional, diba? Kasi kung mag-craft, partan ko rin, 2024, so nag-declare namang tag year-end surplus, pero wala pa man na human ang tuig, diba?
Kuan siya, ma'am. Ang naadri sa record nga surplus gi-present na to is surplus 2021 and 2022.
Ah, okay. Okay.
Kay ipresent manas siya all, kay naaman ko siya comparison prior years.
Okay.
Kay para unta na siya, nganong na i-comparison prior years, when we set an estimate, we have to analyze the income trend.
Yeah.
Ah, na-unta na siya. Which is related also sa succeeding question ni Honorable Ramos. How do we come up with the estimate? Do we have analysis, do we have mechanics, or whatever, nga gigamit ni municipal treasurer in setting the estimate?
So klaruhan ako, ma'am, magawa siyang term nga surplus. First, kung ang actual realized income minus the, minus the actual expenses, kung more than, so kanas siya. And another is, kahit wala namit ang actual realized income, but the actual expenses is gagmay surplus siya. So kanang term nga savings, kanu sa puna siya magawa?
Ah. Savings and surplus, muna na siya og pareho. Pero kung mayon kag savings, like mukuha kag savings sa PS, we can declare savings on the, on the current date. Let's say sa, sa funding na to, sa possession. Let's say it remains unfilled, January to March. Wala siya na, na-filled up. So kung mo-filled up ka, na, di naman pwedeng effectiveness niya January. Kay mo-PSB man ka, na pag-April or ma, let's say ma-effect iyang, iyang appointment, May. So naa kay savings, January to April. So madeclear siya. So once I needed, ano, is certification from the Human Resource that for January to April, it is unfilled possession. So ang funding, ano, kaysa annual, kulier man atong ginafan, January to December. So ang January to April, wala siya napu, na-apoytan, walay tau, vacant ang possession, savings ang appropriation. Savings of appropriation is different from the savings sa cash.
So PS gid lang na siya pod, canang nga savings.
PS, kasi ang MOE, delete ta ka-declare nga savings siya, kay ongoing kasi ang PPAs.
Wala man, di man ta strict, ma'am, no? Sa project implementation, diba, usually sa form sa budget, ga-require man taunta, og kanus ang implementation?
Yes, we have budget. That's why we, ang budget na ay daghang face, diba, lima? So budget execution, budget preparation, budget accountability. Dito sa budget accountability, dito makita ang accomplishments sa implementation. Dito sa budget preparation, dito makita ang plan. Kanus na to siya gi plano i-implement, including the procurement plan. Let's say you plan to be implemented April, so procurement plan nimo earlier than April. Para pag-April, start na og implement.
So delete man ta strict, ano, no? Kasagaran manggod, ang mga budget per mina siya ginahurot nalang at the end of the year. Kasi wala siya na-implement sa time, ngailahang gibutang sa plan, kung kanus na nila implement. So delete ta strict, ano, ang open na siya. So basically, ang savings gud nga term is, sa PS, ragid na maka-inulung na lang. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Ah, ma'am Ling.
Yes, sir.
Kano ba mayong tag, savings, surplus? Iba dito na to na ma-maybawi, o madetermine after end year?
Yes, sir. Ako lang naging inon at the end of the year. Delete siya ma-identify sa end, sa semester. Sagi, pangutana ni Ma'am Chanti, maka-identify lang tag savings in appropriation anang current nga date sa, sa PS. Kanang sitwasyon, nawala, naatay vacant possession, nawala pa na filapan. So mabakan, mabsave ang appropriation. Appropriation pa lang, lahi ang savings sa appropriation, lahi ang savings sa cash. Kay kung cash may inon ta dito, na ta sa end of the year. So pwede to siyang mariver, ang appropriation. Okay. So another example, on the same page, item 2. Receipts, business income receipts from market operation shows that for the first semester, we generated income of 7,860,877.81, and the estimated revenues for the second semester is only 5,739,122.19, for total of 13,600. With this presentation, we find comfort that the estimate for the second semester, which is in fact much lower than the first semester's actual, can most likely be achieved. The same format will easily guide us to questionable figures. For instance, personal services for the first semester is only 3.94 million. Why should PS increase by 2.653 million to 5.7M or an 87% increase in the remaining six months of the year? Take the case of the personal services of economic, personal economic relief allowance in the first six months, actual is 192K, for the second semester, estimate is 312K. Column. Column sa estimate, actual estimate and total. For pera, that is fixed 2,000 per month per employee. Under market, under market, economic enterprise, there are 21 personnel. So ang total ano, 21 personnel times 2 times 12, manan siya'y total estimated expenditure. Comes January to June, ang market daghan sila vacant positions. Daghan sila vacant positions sir. So sa column sa actual, January to June, gamay jud ang amount over sa column sa estimate. Total estimated expenditure minus the actual expenditure, the remaining amount remains estimated to be spent yet. Ang, ang mahitabo sir. And the remaining amounts sa income estimate to be collected yet. So wala ta nag-estimate ano sir, ah, wala ta nag-estimate o expenses. Um baga act, ah, what I mean is nag-estimate ta for the 21 personnel of 2,000 a month times 12, manan siya'y ato ang computation for one year. But it happened nga sa market na ay daghang vacant position, so meaning January to June, wala ma-spend ang 2,000. Kawa, may sweldo gidawat. So gamay ang column nga amount sa actual payment over sa nabiliin. Nakuhan na'to sir?
Mister Chair, for consideration, may we request the Honorable Ramos to please use the microphone so that it will be, the, what, whatever he says will be recorded accordingly.
I'm doing a requesting and reminding the Honorable Ramos kindly please use the microphone.
Yes, go ahead, Honorable Ramos. Magkonsider manato a surplus. Katunggi minso ni mo ganihanga.
Dili siya surplus eh, sir, savings in appropriation. Ngah pwede to siyang gamito na'to for reversion other items. Ano siya? So definitely, there was no increase. Wala siya'y increase sa PS, katung makita ni mo, first column gamay nga amount, second column dako nga amount, wala siya ni increase. Motu siya'y dako, kay motoy nabiliin nga wala pa ma-spend. Kaya ang na-spent na'to gamay kay na ay vacant position, so wala ta nag-sweldo, wala ta nag-hatag o pera. Kwan na'to sir, okay. Observation number two, in year 2022, operations of the public market was profitable with revenues of 18.19 million and expenditures of 14 million, leaving a surplus of 4 million. However, for 2023 and 2024, we project a break-even in operation. While we understand that revenues will be drastically reduced, especially in year 2024, owing to the file that got it down a major part of the public market on June 10, 2022, which we still have to reconstruct. What I cannot understand is why expenditures budget for 2023 and 2024 are at 17.6 million and 14.5 respectively, which are much higher than that of 2022 when operations of the public market was in full scale, at least in the first five months before the fire. I think there is a need to scale down our expenditures for the operations of the public market commensurate to the level of its operations. Also, operating performance of both the slaughterhouse and land transport terminal were this mal in 2022 with surplus of only 5,437.63 and 19,549.08 respectively. Total of these amounts cannot even pay for one month JO. And for the year and the next year, we are projecting a break-even operations for these two enterprises. If this were privately owned businesses, I am sure this has long been shut down or sold. Why are we keeping these enterprises which do not generate net cash flows for the local government? Again and again sir, this has been a long issue on our economic enterprise. But we have to take note that this economic enterprise that we have is not really an economic enterprise per se. These are basic services, that whether they will make money or not, we have to remain these services. Market, slaughterhouse, ta, bus terminal. Di manato ni pwedong ma, makuha na siya, ma, malugi or unsa. Saloon dun ni siya gehapon sa general fund because these are basic services. If our economic enterprise may be an operation of a hotel, operation of a resort, kanak, pwede na siya. Maunang ang ato ang economic enterprise for the office of the municipal treasurer, wala siya naka-trust. Naayhapon siya sa general fund pero separate account lang siya. Morag mahulog, general fund economic enterprise gud ang status atong economic enterprise. Maybe I don't want to put meaning, ah, nganong nabutang ni before economic enterprise, maybe for the reason nga kanang creation of positions. Kasi if we will term economic enterprise, may exempt kasi sa PS limitation. And we know for a fact that economic enterprise has many plantilia possessions. That's supposed to be per suggestion sa, ah, operating manual of local economic enterprise, it should not be a regular possession. It should only be a job order or a contract of service. So that when time comes, na-dili kaya sa economic enterprise, as Sir Ramos is expressly stating sa iyang hang konseren, nga nganong dili na'to is shut down kung dili ga-income. So kung iunan ang economic enterprise, walay tao affected if is shut down ang business. Kasi term based lang man ang mga job order and contract of services. But if it's a plantilia possession covered by the civil service, dili na'to pwede silang tanggalon sa trabaho. Still, it will be absorbed by the general fund. Why we are encouraging this economic enterprise nga naata to ha, to make money or to have income? Purposely to help the general fund. Ngano siyang i-encourage, nga daghan dapat, self-sustaining siya, dapat, daku iyang income, dapat naatay business plan, strategic plan, et cetera, para mo-ugment, kaya that is always the challenge of the local government unit will be built, not really depend on the share of the NTA or IRA as what we previously call. Dapat kuantahan ang proactivitas ato ang mga plans and programs and activities para mo generate tagdakong income. Para di, kung magamay ang atong share sa NTA, ma-affected ang ato ang mga programa, atong appropriation. Pero kung daku atong income, like sa Bongga City, daku kaya sila local income, maski wala sila NTA share, they can survive and they can still operate. Pero kita kumawan ang tao, NTA share, ugh mo-ubos biglang NTA share, niya'tong income is just around 100 million. Can we, can we survive with the, or the NTA of 200, can we survive of the 200 or 300? Nagliso ganita rin NTA and local source, manay challenge sa local government unit sir, motong imuhang konseren. Ngah maningka mo tamu generate o local income, but kaniyang atong economic enterprise existing karoon are basic services. Dili na'to siya pwedeng is shut down, maski na-lugi siya, kay basic services siya sir.
Hello, Mr. Chair.
Yes sir.
Kanibang mido plantilia, oh, personnel. Appeal ba na PS, kuwan na'to? 75% sa PS, PS limit, limitation?
Mauna siyang gi, mauna siyang economic enterprise may be before. Kaya economic enterprise manan siya since naglingkod si Mayor Ami, economic enterprise na siya. Ni daghan jud that they had created plantilia possessions, na imong i-compute ang PS limitation, it all exceeded sa PS limitation. But since it is expect, ah, exempted, wala ta gina kuwan ano, wala ta gina call ang atong attention to reduce the, the cost of PS. Only sa general fund taga bantay. Pero muna, it discourage gud unta ang creation of plantilia positions daghan sa economic enterprise. Kaya comes mo, i-absorb na sa, sa general fund, ang PS cost niya makarga sa general fund, it will affect the entire, everything.
Sumudo problem na sekripisyo ang atong kuwan sa plantilia positions sa diles ato municipal tungo dalang mido. Kaya hama, hama sedi total budget, ah, kanang personnel sa, sa mido. Kung wala, kung wala panan mido siguro, opider mantan alang mido subi absorb by the, kaniyang enjoy piluntakay. Other cities, sula dagany, pero wak man sila, economic enterprise.
Na sir.
Ha na ba?
Na, na sir, naan. Nag-benchmarking ta, ah, ah, mister Chair, may have the floor? Nag-benchmarking ta before, ah, during the time of Mayor Alibutdan, nag-benchmarking ta sa Tagum City. Ah, tungod sa pag-implement, pag-institu, institutionalize sa economic enterprise. Na sir, ang mga syudad na, ato nanggi-apply diri sa local government.
So nakita na kuwan na, ang, ang Pagodan City, naan sila. Pero sa Pagodan City, wala si Bus City, all other mga charter cities, wala siya.
Na, na sir. Sir, na sir, sa daghan. Na sir, naan.
Naan, panan.
Na sir.
Pero der kuwan, operation dari economic enterprise, kuwan kaniyang geding. Suposin, ang ato isa, lusing, kaya andi di manual sa economic enterprise. Yeah, di, yeah, di arrikuay to make sure that in five years operation, nag, nag-earn ng income, profitable. Pero kung dili mag-earn ng income within five years period, there's no reason to continue operation di, economic enterprise?
Motong akong guingon sir, ganihanga. Kaniyang ato ang gitawag nga economic enterprise are basic services. Kung dili siya mo gain jud kayo, dili na'to siya pwedeng tanggalon? Walaon ang services kay basic services siya. Sa makarga gud siya balik sa general fund. Sa ako pa pong guingon, ang ato ang pag-treat sa atong economic enterprise karoon, dili pag jud siya separate nga naka-trust fund ang income no, naapag jud siya sa general fund. Gi-separate lang na'to ba, morabag na as a general fund nga ga-income. Manay ginaincourage na'to, nga mo-income jud ang economic enterprise to really help the general fund. Ngah makatabang siya sa pag-source, sa mga pag-provides, atong mga panginahanglan, nga providean sa mga programs, projects, and activities under the general fund.
Ato nakita, so far, ang nag-earn ng income sa economic enterprise, sa'to ang caner mang slaughterhouse. Siguro will start operating, di kaniyang, kaniyang trust, trust, transport na'to? Kanan? 100% mo, so, earn tag income na'ta?
Yes, we already discussed that with the local finance committee. Na analay gamay inukuwan ang site development dering dapita, gi-hulat lang ang weather kay sigig ulan, kaya basig maglama-lama na inoon. Ang gi-hatag daw ni Mayor nga, nga timeframe, nga by the end of this year, maka-start, maybe January or February. Basta kita gaan sila time to prepare within this year. So basi maghatag nag-endorsement ang local chief executive to the Sangguniyan, kay it needs ordinance for the operation sa market because it includes mga fees. So high time namang po na-update ang ato ang revenue code. So will I proceed sir?
Okay, thank you.
You also asked about the projections, the estimates, the parameters sa pag-hatag ni local treasurer sa iyang income. So according to the local treasurer, ilalang siyang gina, wala sila gigamit nga parameters, ah, analysis. Ang ilalang gihimo is automatic 10% markup of the actual realized income of the next preceding year. Meaning 2024 nga proposed budget, ilang estimate, ilang giba sihan is actual realized income 2022 times 10% mo-igim markup. Ano lang ang ilahang pag base sa estimate. So regarding estimate sir, I cannot, or I'm not the proper authority to, if you want a detailed explanation on setting up estimates. So maybe you can ask the Treasury for that.
Okay, any more queries, clarifications, Honorable Serapin Ramos?
I would like to request the budget nga to, to proceed with the
Yes sir, I will proceed.
Taas, taas pa muna.
Daw, taas, taas pa sir.
Kaya mo, 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 muli bang ko na siya by next week siguro?
Oo sir. So di ako ng laktawan sir, ang kaniyang estimate. Madiretsyon ako sa imong konseren sa kani' God, God, okay sir? Sa God, okay. Di buk na koneska dagat sir. Honestly, one of the budget items, one present is the appropriation for God. Because while it is intended to improve the well-being of the weaker gender or equality among genders, I still have to see how it really work to achieve that goal. And we are appropriating 5% of the total budget for that purpose every year. Imagine every year, but we have to accept it because it is provided by law. Morag di jugaganahan aning gender and development sir. As they say, the law is hard but that is the law. What I learned however, that almost every year, a large part of this appropriation is being realigned for some other purposes because God PPA seem to not really need that much amount every year. Sir, with this, with this observation, I beg to disagree. Ah, kanang for the information of everybody, our gender and development fund utilization is being monitored by Dakoa. We are submitting accomplishment report every end of the year in the utilization of gender and development fund. And please do not consider the 5% for gender and development fund as a separate budget. That's why we are mainstreaming all the PPAs in our annual investment program. We are encouraged however, that, that the 5% that will address gender issues will influence the other 95% to be gender responsive. It makes a behind, in the near future, we envision that all our programs, plans, projects, activities will be gender responsive, meaning ugh mo-identify tag PPAs dapat fairness and equality among all genders. Male, female, senior citizen, PWD, children, members of the LGBTQ plus, depending on the need. That's why we call fair distribution of opportunities and distribution of basic services. So, getable na dapat tanan sir. Ayaw hunahuna ang ang 5% morabug at siyang giwalas ato ang budget. Any PPAs from all offices can be attributed to gender and development fund. Like for example sir, in the Sangguniambayan budget, naabatay na identify dering a gender issues, pila ang babae o pila ang lalaki, majority is men, minority is women. So we need to capacity, give gender sensitivity training as mandated by law. That all members of the Sangguniambayan should undergo GST, gender sensitivity training. Kaya para masamtan sa, sa members of Sangguniambayan, how important is gender and development? So ang budget sa training pwede na'to i-attribute into God. Si supplies and distribution of supplies between men and women and other genders. So any programs actually can be attributed to ge, gender and development. So ayaw hunahuna ang sir, ang bugatning 6.6% nga atong nap, na-attribute sa God. Dili siya separate budget. These are mga regular programs, let, let's say for example, honorarium of our daycare workers, honorarium of our BHW, health worker, hilot, ah, BNS, all attributed to God. These are regular programs, ato gini siyang gi, providean of appropriation kay sulduhan mani sila. Dili pod mabuhay ang LGU, wala ni sila. Dili pod mabuhay ang LGU wala ni sila, dili pwedeng wala ni sila. So atong gi-attribute, nga na siya God issue, na siya God issue. Muna siyang na-attribute siya dili sir. So ayaw instinct separate ang five percent God, it is part of the one hundred percent. Ngapwede pa ng, the one hundred percent all will be gender issues, more response sa gender issues. And the succeeding nga imo ha mga items sir, ah, all kaniin reduction sa mayor's office di rinata. You take note here, reductions of fuel, reductions electricity, janitorial services under sa mayor's office, reductions ah, taxes, duties, and licenses, insurance. Tanan ni siya sir, ni reduced because these are programs or items nga gi-sacrifice gamay ni mayor to give favor sa request sa Sangguniambayan to increase your budget. Okay nata sir, say I'll proceed. Sa establishment of God database banking system, ah, it's still ongoing, almost one hundred percent completed. Ah, don't worry, we will invite your presence during the plenary explanation, presentation of this kay naapanisay training i-conduct sa muhandal sa system, no? So this is again mandated by law to have ah, data, data system, our CBMS. Kay di rin, not only gender ang ato ang makuha, profiling, mga profiles sa men, women, children, PWD, senior citizen, all data that we need, kay dili, muna siyang naa para accurate ato ang data, maka identify tagsakto nga issue. So kung naatay sakto ng issue, maka identify taog sakto nga programs, projects, and activities, nga mo address sa issue, kaya naamantay data. Muna siyang importante sa siya, significant kaayun ni siyang a budget under sa gender and development fund. So ayaw ko worry sir, ah, we will invite you, kay amo pong gi-invite ang contractor ani. Maybe, tanan ta naatuan na ba, no ani, nga nakuha og data sa ato mga panimalay. Di ba maagtan diyan tag mga thirty minutes sa interview, dugay kayo, daghan kayo pati buhi ni mo nga e-ring og e-ro ipangutana? No, pila ka book members sa family, income, savings, bank accounts, di ba ginapangutana? So sa imo pong mga pangutana regarding God sir, kaniin mga programs, sumakita ni mo dito sa form, twenty twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. Twenty four is budget year, twenty three current year, twenty two is the previous year. Dili kakakita dito under sa mayor's office, sa mga God nga gi-attribute sa twenty twenty two, kaya na under siya each implementing office. Comes twenty twenty two na ay guidelines ang Kowa gi-release, nga ibutang siya sa usaka office para mamonitor ang implementation. Kaya sa twenty twenty three, o twenty twenty two na ana siya dili sa mayor's office. Oh, makita ni mo sa presentation sir, per program. So kung per program nga gi-identify na'to, ng mo address sa issue, ang explanation naan sir naa sa God plan and budget nga later on, you will discuss with Ma'am Chan ti sa iyang committee report. Na dito naka-explain tanan sa project profile, supported with worksheet and supported with POW and other documents to support sa proposal, naa siya dito sir. So every program nga ato ang gi-identify, mo address na siya og certain issues, nga na ay gender issues. And every program naay activities himo-on to ident, to address the issue, naay expenses needed. Let's say, for example, ah, issues on vouchy. Vouchy is balaoon na'to na violence against women and children. nga currently, per data collected, we still have many cases experiencing vouchy. Data was taken from the police, PN Pinato e-pil. You still have kanang cases on rape, harassment, and abuse. So based on that data, naatay issue na, na, na come up on vouchy. Unsa proactive PPAs na hunahunaan na'to to address the vouchy. So there are a lot of PPAs that can be, that can be conducted, right? So isa sa ato ang i, na hunahunaan is conduct, conduct, let's say GST among school institution because ang mga victim per, per record is estudyante abuse by the teacher. So we can conduct GST sa mga school institution for the teacher and the students to be aware on this law. What are the penalties kung kanang himo-oni sa teacher? And unsa pod ang rights sa bata, nga iyahang mahibauan para dili pod niya i-allow, i-abuse siya sa teacher. So these are just examples sir. So every year, lahi-lahi ato ang ma-identifying a gender issues. Niya mo address og ang basis na'to ang balaoon. So daghan matag mga balaoon, vouchy, anti-bastos law, daghan stereotype issues na siya between men and women. So a lot of issues actually nga ato ang ma-identify. Muna makita ni mo sa presentation sir, dili diyan siya pareho, dili ba pareho aning regular budget? Representation twenty two, na napoy representation twenty three, napoy representation twenty, twenty four. Di ri depende sa PPAs, depende sa expenses needed for the conduct of the activity. So masamtan ni mo thoroughly dito sa project profile, which is part of the God plan and budget, which will be discussed later ni Honorable Kapirig sa iyang committee report. Sinapatay questions sa God sir, okay nata? Okay. Let's proceed sa imong question sir on legislative services.
Ma'am, pila na ka questions tanan ma'am?
Kua na lang.
Maagtan taga po ni.
Two pages na lang sir. Ah, question na lang sa legislative services.
Yes, yes, but those questions are kuhan, pwedeng, asin lang, iipadayon.
Okay sir, last na lang. Kanina lang man po sir, last na, og ang summary. For the legislative services, appropriation for other general services is one point thirty-three M in twenty twenty two, one point twenty-eight M in twenty twenty three, and one point twenty-nine M in twenty twenty four. What expenditures fall under this expense account? If this is not supported with schedule of particulars, this can be viewed as discretionary fund of the vice mayor. Sir, other general services are wages of JO and contract of services. Okay na sir? Why the, why more than one hundred percent increase in representation expense for the legislative from seven hundred twenty-two K in twenty twenty three to one point five in twenty twenty four? In twenty two, it was one point seven, but reduced to seven twenty-two in twenty twenty three, which would only mean that the office can do with smaller representation expense budget. So why the need to double the amount in twenty twenty four? Lisod kung sabo, oh, tubaga ni sir. Am I supposed to, to, to ask this question? Ah, ani, all budget proposal coming from the different office, ang nag-prioritize is the department concern. So with your question sir, ang nag-prioritize ani is your office, Sangguniambayan. So I, I've, ah, asked Nening, you already talk about it during your session, and you agreed on your budget proposal. So ano ang naitable sir, maybe twenty twenty four, you expect more meetings, more but hearings, and more, more activities, that's why you need to double your representation expense? Just maybe. Next sir, okay na ka sir? Finally, in totality, the net, net reduction of the appropriation is only one point forty-eight M, which could easily be absorbed by the decrease in appropriation in two items. Janitorial services decreased by four point twenty, security services three point eighty-five M, for a total of eight point five M. We do not know exactly if the current budget for these two expense items were overestimated because we do not see the actual expenses during the first semester, and whether or not the balance will be fully utilized in the remaining six months of the year. Assuming that twenty twenty three estimates for these two items are approximate to the actual at year end, we can suspect that the substantial decrease is deliberate to distribute this to other expenditures which are otherwise not appropriated last year or being increased by next year. So, can any of the finance team explain to us what really happened? Any increase or decrease in any item or appropriation of every office is the decision of the department head concern, and it is approved by the local chief executive. The local finance committee is only given the budget ceiling of each office. It is now the budget, budget, ah, it is not the department concern to identify which item or appro- appropriation they need to increase or decrease depending on their priority, provided it will be within the budget ceiling. So that ends with my explanation on your question sir.
Okay, thank, thank you kayo Ma'am Leno. Sa ibong explanation, at least na, na, cleared. Atong mga kuhan ba, doubt, doubt. Kaya importante mo gugang, kaniin executive, ang legislative branch, maka kuhan ba?
Yes sir.
Makausa ang, pagpanikamot na diyan ma, mahatagan diyan oh, ah, sakto dibilpin, gan'tong luutso sa ipit. Thank you, salamat kayo.
Thank you, thank you kayo sir.
Thank you for, for your time, alag sa mga pagtubag sa mga queries ni Honorable Seraphine Ramos. Thank you ma'am, good morning. Okay, ah, session, may back order?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I move for a recess, Mr. Chair, we will take our lunch?
Okay, thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, recess for thirty minutes?
Okay, so um before the honorable Haseem will deliver his committee report, um siguro mayroon ka na siyang mga concerna sa other matters. Uh first, kausang pastoriyaan ang atuang sanggunian secretary. This is with regards to the status on the uh the status of our newly installed IPMR. Kaba lumabot ang wala'y napasa, sanggunian resolution ang atuang uh ang atuang napili ng IPMR. So akong ihatag ang floor ka rin, atuang sanggunian secretary. Saya mga concerns na ipaabot sa atuang. So before that, Mr. Flor, can you move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our madam secretary?
I move for the suspension of the rule, Honorable Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh I have referred this matter during our Miduna oral and congress. So ni Sajasila, kung pwede sa sanggunian kinakapasan mo resolution, i-revisit ang inyong resolution. Because on the part of the sanggunian, it is only a ministerial duty. So kung dun namang gani kaso din na ang pailan, uh morag um outside na sa inyong jurisdiction. So ang akong apprehension is baka two months namang good. So nagclaim siya, nadawat siya grata using the visitors logbook muna ang iyang gisirok. So i-refer na ko gehapon sa kuwa, inku meaning kay katoy ang giatatch, visitas, visitors siya. Dili siyang membersa council pero services rendered manggood. So dapat madawat din na saya, unless kung dun na na niya result sa investigation, anak lang. Sigito months is enough sa ihatag na to nga time, kaya wala ma'am po diha po'ng resulta. I-revisit lang siguro ang kanang inyong previous nga nahimong legislation.
Okay, so anybody would like to do the honor in sponsoring such resolution? Recognizing the honorable Al Lapid Muhammad as the official ogah as the newly installed IPMR of this municipality? Any comments, any discussion? Yes, yes.
Deepak, Honorable Muhammad. Aboride, uh Kapiparnes. Kitaong kan?
We're still on committee report, is there anybody? Pass committee report, please raise your hand. Honorable Ramos, any committee report?
Okay, so before the honorable Haseem will deliver his committee report, siguro, meron ko na ni siya nga concerna sa other matters. First, kausang pastoryaan ang atuang sanggunyang secretary. This is with regards to the status the status of our newly installed IPMR. Kabaluman ta nga wala'y napasa nga sanggunyang resolution ang atuang ang atuang napili nga IPMR, so akong ihatag ang floor ka rin sa atuang sanggunyang secretary. Siya mga concerns nga ipaabot sa atuang. So before that, Mr. Floor, can you move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our madam secretary?
I move for the suspension of the rule, honorable Chair.
You will suspend it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have referred this matter during our Miduna oral and congress. So ni Sajasila, kung pwede sa sanggunian kinakapasan mo resolution, i-revisit ang inyong resolution because on the part of the sanggunian, it is only a ministerial duty. So kung doon namang gani kaso din na nga pailan, morag outside na sa inyong jurisdiction. So ang akong apprehension is baka two months namang good. So nagclaim siya. Nagdawat sa grata using the visitors lag book muna ang ihang gisiruk. So girefer na ko gahapon sa kuwa inku meaning, kaya katoy ang giattach, visitas, visitors siya. Delete siyang member sa council. Pero services rendered manggood, so dapat madawat din na siya. Unless, kung doon na na niya result sa investigation, anak lang. Sigito months is enough sa ihatag na to nga time kaya wala ma'am po dihapon resulta. I-revisit lang siguro ang kanang inyohang previous nga nahimong legislation.
Okay, so anybody would like to do the honor in sponsoring such resolution? Recognizing the honorable Al Lapid Muhammad as the official as the newly installed IPMR of this municipality? Any comments, any discussion? Yes?
Deepak Honorable Muhammad. Aboride Kape Parnes. Kitaan koan? Ketong pinyalamber penteh series of twenty eleven. Eh, Kape Parnes ni Kantang di municipal treasurer inkludin ni Kuwa. So masalay commentan na, desko na to resolution. Larok na desa guidelines.
Okay, sige padayan madam secretary for the explanation for the explanation of that said comment. Basta may mga mga outcome anipuhon o di iisa mapasahad resolution. Say worst nga senaryo ato madangtan ano eh?
Ang akong apprehension lang sir kay sa ihang pag services rendered namang good, so dapat bayaran siya what is due to him. Pero, kung panulitan mga isa na akong certification, mo certify ko nga he was installed. Pero daily komusite o resolution as to his acceptance, kaya wala man. So, malang to akong kuwan sa iha akong gikuwan kay kuwa kaga hapon motoningon siya o moti giattach niya sa ihang pagclaim sa rata i-post audit na lang niya. Then magimo na lang siya o ihang audit observation. Kaya inku ang certificate of assumption na attach is siya'y nagcertify o nag konsa iyang kogalingon that he assumed office, daily ako.
Okay.
Motong nakatast dito. Baka ma-technical ba?
Yes.
So kung sa magani outcome sa mga outside na mga petition inana so ministerial on the part of the sanggunian to receive it then come what may, konsa may resulta.
Okay, so if ever the sanggunian nga delete mo pasa resolution, so wala na tay?
Ah, wala, wala raman dihapon.
If delete yun mapasahan?
Para sa ko, there is no need to pass a resolution.
Lagi, laman gaya, lagi, lagi. We do understand your opinion, we do have different opinions regarding this matter. So I was just asking the secretary na batay morag matubang ng mga future ng mga atubang nunon, if ever the sanggunian will not be passing.
Insight lang din na to, ang katong gikuwan ni Mam Gemma, ang ALG opinion, katun na lang.
Yes, one lagi na, ang ALG opinion nga, as long as he possesses the COA, the certificate of affirmation and the post of office, so that's it. So para mahumanan ni siya kay morag delete man willing, ang sanggunyang bayan.
So naka observed mo sa roll call gani, delete na kung mention o ngalan.
May have the floor. I just want to correct your statement, Mr. Chair. Na the sanggunyang bayan is not willing.
Okay, as of the moment?
Oh, as of the moment, even from the start.
Okay.
So it doesn't mean na wala ka nagpasag resolution ah, delete na willing. It was repeatedly told before the sanggunyang bayan wala mi mahimo nga sanggunyang bayan, musugot mong sa daily mulingko dun na siya. O given, nakalingko naman with the statement of honorable Ramos, di nakinala resolution sa sanggunyang bayan, but why? During the installation, he passed a resolution but none of us seconded. Kay, nakasabot me sa ALG opinion. So kung unsa man ang mahimong resulta, so for me musti ko sa akong opinion nga delete ta magpasag resolution kay wala'y role ang sanggunyang bayan as what the ALG stated before and even the book of the opinion of the ALG. So wala'y role lang sanggunyang bayan, so wala takabalukun asa asa ni, so naglingko naman si Haji Aped as IPMR. No, nakareceive na siya sa ihang, sa iyang, sa ni salary, so wala takabalukun sa ang kuwan, depende na sa kuwa, kung sa ang ilahang kung sa ang ilapag appreciate anang ihang, ihang paglingko dari as IPMR. Basta sa akong understanding, di kinahanglan ang resolution sa sanggunyang bayan.
Ah, Mr. Chair, moni akong delay makaroon kay kamutanan, di ba ga-pirma mo sa akong lag book? So moni ang evidence ng member ka sa council. Siya wala na ko ipapirma tunggu ako'y basis. Inyohan na mo 'yung out of office, wag ang sa kumilek. So di ko magpapirma mo, konsa man giattach niya ang visitors lag book.
Sige, are you through, Madam Secretary?
May have the floor again. Sa imo sa, sa dinhi sa moa ang, ang imohang gi-gunitan is among oath of office.
Kumilek na kuwan, sa
kani kumilek nga sa ni, sa bana resolution bana. So, dinhi ka Haji Aped, unsa papabay kinhanglanimo diya sa imong level para ma, para ma comply niya? Inana ba?
Dapat namang good ang resolution. That, ang evidence niyang, he is officially recognized as the official representative of the IPMR representing the sama tribe. Anan na siya, dapat. Kesa certification, i-sight manggood ang resolution number.
So delete na na role sa sanggunyang bayan te. It might be the role of the ALG, nga mo, nga mo kuwan, na determine na na.
So ang atong isetol, ang isihang problem apod nga delete niya mapapirma sa lag book, so basic ma, bilin siya hanging permisi. Honorable Lapid ba nga, sa mani, member ko sa sanggunyang bayan, niyo di ba mapapirmaan sa lag book niya? So moni atong isetol na lang at kuwan ba?
Mag, magsikta vice o opinion sa ALG. O kabahin na na. Kay first and foremost, di isturyahan ta, wala'y role ang sanggunyang bayan.
Yes, yes, oh, precisely.
Oh, wala'y role ang sanggunyang bayan, so unsa pa may role ang atuang gusto ipasulod diha.
Okay, so malang to ang concern ni girece ni ato ang madam secretary, that's why I have given her the floor.
Musik tag opinion dyan sa DJ na vice.
Okay, so maybe some saking daw opinion siguro, ikuwan na, i-black and white na.
Di na kinala opinion, lagi motor academic inana, diba?
Yes, lagi, we do respect your opinion, but si Mam, ato ang madam secretary, napo say.
Di, di ato berespeto sa opinion sa kuwan.
Okay, so
DEJ opinion, number twenty seven.
Ang ato alandri, atong gi-paminaw po.
Ni girete, re, pala.
Yes, we do understand your plight.
Do na mo, do na mo request opinion sa DEJ.
Yes.
Kasabot na halo sa DEJ, akarin poan.
Yes, we do understand your plight, but ato pong gi-paminaw, ang concerns atong secretary kay siya, siya may gahawid po ni kuwan, mo po't yang concern. So mona nga, paunsa na to siya isetol.
Pero, obili na niya, delete i-recognize atong secretary ang atong IP representative napila na na ka, si mana siya nagduty dari
Doa kabulan?
Do na kabulan. Sa ni Minta po, magquestion ato secretary.
Di man ako magrecognize, sir, kamoman magrecognize, ministerial ako amusulat.
Automatic na kala.
Ikaw guingon automatic?
Wala may automatic justice sa legislation, sir.
Moragin na 'yung mga sarap.
automatic guidelines, lere.
Wala i-require resolution. Atong una, atong una, nga no nga nagpersinko resolution, apan diya baso kon? Apan diya baso, ex-bud member ang san
Danda.
Danda. Pero delete kunta ato angay, gumopersin ng resolution, kaya tungod na ni lagi.
Pero nga naman, kano'ng sensors.
Karoon.
Morag na, morag na bangga ang imong opinion.
Honorable Ramos, honorable Ramos. Nakasabot me sa imo.
Yes, yes.
Pero, ang, ang ginapangita sa atong sanggunyang secretary, ang basis. Unsa may basis, delete para sa ato, namantay certificate kuwan, gigikan sa kumilek, kunyang iya, unsa may basis niya sa pag-ila sa iya nga IPR as a representative.
Kagi suluan na siya, late, DEJ, o kala na ang kuwa, baka murik lamo. Kaya niya man, niya klaro makay niya. Masama siya merka.
Mauna gani, to akong iistoriya gani ha sir. Isik na tong opinion sa ALG, kabahin sa concern ni Atilalay.
Pwede bang certificate of confirmation sa NCIP?
Affirmation.
Affirmation sa NCIP.
Affirmation.
Pwede man siguro, katurang pa ngang basis. Except kung naapegerequire nga line require ng kuwa.
Si Haji Aped vice.
Sige, honorable Lapid, Muhammad.
Hello, what upon nono sa atong koleksya kuwan SB. Let's ring umang opiniya manggudno, is legal basis lang siya sa online sarapabrikatit residentuan. As no sa katong Augusto pas na gurekognize ko niyo. So ang atong guremakaroon, ang atong secretary nga, osa yang besihan gunitan dyan na as re-cognition ta ay representative. So, nama ikuti ako deng DJ dari pati namin siya, since sa katong Augusto, pito na nga ihatag na to sa secretary na to.
Paki clarified daw, delete kay ma klaro, mas ato?
Kani ang upin mo base ni kani sa legal, ati kani sa ALG. So, katong gikan sa Augusto na sa dengka indicate dery kung ang sa proseso red as a IP representative sa legislative council body. So ihatag na to ni ko na para at least may basa.
Okay, sige. Okay, we leave this concern to our secretary with her concern with regards to the status oga sa pag acknowledge ato ang IPMR cause because siguro ang kuwan anit Madam Secretary, for two months niya nga kuwan, morag kung sa minutes, delete gini mo siya ma kuwan, maapil. So minana ba, mal left hanging si Honorable Haji Aped ba kay naasiya, gated, but will not be included the minutes kay wala man siya, morabag naasiya diha physically, but dari sa official official kuwan sa atong secretary wala siya. So manasay, morag atong angay resolve no? We do respect your opinion, I do respect everybody's opinion, but paunsa na to, we have to, atong tarungon.
That is not my opinion, the opinion of
Lagi, yeah, yeah. But gani, your opinion on the ALG, ang una ginarespectan ang opinion gani, atong ginarespect dari, but namapui kuwan atuang secretary nga apprehension or whatsoever nga, mapui iha, so ato ang angay resulbaron within this ah, August body, no kay namay nagka dayang mga opinion, napuigya, ALG opinion. And ALG mismo ni ingon dari nga, there's no need for the sanggunyang bayan to pass a resolution, so sa bagya tungtuhan anibat, ang atong secretary po napo say kinhanglan nga buhaton nga dapat po niyang buhaton nga, unsa yang basis po, so moni siya ang atong angay nga resulbahon. Okay, tuman sebepo taon si Haji Aped present dari.
We give respect to the opinion of the ALG. Okay, nabasa man ato na, okisulti po na sa atuang.
Can I lampot kay?
That's why during the time when the honorable Ramos passed that resolution acknowledging Haji Aped, wala'y ni second. Kay, gina naman tauna nga, di na kinanglan o kuwan, legislation, resolution. So kuwan ta ato, kanang nakasabot ta ato.
Kanila po ya, kinala si mga apprehension kami because napo say mga precedents sa mga ginafollow ba before mga kuwan, so careful lang po atong secretary, paunsa po niya ihandol ang iha ang mga kuwan.
Basta sa, sa among part as sanggunyang bayan, di na kinanglan o resolution.
Okay, so
Simple, magkasabot pantanay.
Bitaw sir.
Ikaw, I'll give you the floor.
Kung sa pagpasanay mo atong resolution, nari sa Haji Aped, wala ni second. Kaya nakasabot niya, wala na to sanggunyang bayan, di ko sir.
Di ako lang to gay, di, apsi, kuwan ba? Forment, budbider.
Konskati, pwede mo hangyan na lang ko katong imohang gi, katong statement ni mo karoon i-on the record na lang na toto. Ngayon ka nga, with the one, katong opinion sa ALG, di na kinanglan o resolution, kani gikan sa inyong mga discussion para mona lamputoy akong i-sight dari. Kay okay ramang ko mangayo si Haji o certification ang sulod sa kong certification, katulang yud nga, you are, you were installed. Pero as to recognition, wala na siya, kariwa ko'y masight nga resolution. Kaya rin makakobra sweldo.
Mamaman nagsulod sa ALG.
Oo, so katun na lang para ma-record po siya.
Nakinanglan, ano sa sanggunyang bayan? Eh, naknali, hinu, naknali? Based on the unsa nangasert kilang diha sir?
Twenty. Opinion number twenty, series of twenty, twenty eleven.
Honorable Chair. Lalang ko'y pangutan na sa atuang SB secretary. Ang atubang IPMR nakak compliance siya sa tanan mga requirements na submit na niya diya sa imong office.
Naasiya affirmation, Mam, oath of office o katong ihang attachment sa educational qualification niya, katun na so far ang naasakuha. Tulog.
Julie, notarize mo na ngang naasay mo ha?
certificate of affirmation dari
Yes, yes, the ang COA mismo, kuna nakagaposas sa COA, that means ikaw na yud ang so, napaila ang discussion?
Unsa pa man di ilain imong gi kuwan te, pangita sa imong level te.
Katun na lang?
Ah, katulang, kay in case, unsa imong nakobra ba? Sweldo na ko. Nakakobra, nakasweldo? Using the visitors lag book, may mukisiruk. O moti akong girefer gahapon sa kuwa.
Mamaman kuilang gi pangayom ah, sa kuwan, sa mga head of office.
Katulang, no? Nakasweldo siya, but but
Katong visitor lag book, so katong minutes of assumption ako katong sa to, mora to ilang gi pangayo.
Lagi ba kay sa minutes manggood, sa tanang proceeding sa sanggunyang bayan, wala siya.
Kay wala per mero, waas siya sweldo reto, ko na to waas siya Kape Parnes, atong tawag pinyan, pero sadya di Kape Parnes ato sila, wala na sali imik.
Silibay na te, katong mga requirements ni Haji Aped, naasabi siya, delete siya ina, di mo sumay, siya ina.
Ziligang usually manggood ang content sa certification of assumption, katong manggong, i-sight ang resolution nga, he was officially recognized as the IPMR. Pero i-sight na lang na to ng ALG opinion para ma, kuwan po'd mo. Oo, nanaman ka ang opinion.
So for the permission na sa akong sweldo, naswelduan ko atong August, October, katong September. So kani October wala pa siya. Ang rata na ko, na-receive rapun ako.
Okay, so one na say, one na say question. Mu'tay taggrata, niya wala ka sa minutes sa session, so basic kuwan ba na eh? Wala na atong angay tarungon, one ayang concern. One ayang concern, nga nag-receive siya o grata niya wala siya naa-include sa minutes, kaya wala na kapirma siyang lag book.
Kay every month gi pangayuan manggo ko certification as to your attendance here, kay momanay basis, diba? Maka-absent mo ko sa minus, so sa may basis niya, wala mo ko certification.
So problema na sa secretary, gano'n di man siya mo isyo, certification nga, presensiya.
Di man ako problema sir, pa-explain mo siya ngayo.
Oh, pa-explain lang ka.
Wala siya ngayo.
So okay na, katun na.
We will cross the bridge.
Sa atong sundun, niya, simple kayo. Sabok, agriculture, gardeners, oh, makara basta lang man eh, sabok po. Di na ginanon ng legal interpretation.
So parno, mangutan na lang ko no, kung sa manasya, okay na nasayawan 'yung mga problema katu siyang, moon lang tong basihan yud.
Kuwan, manasay guingon eh, secretary karoon, ako siya ikot.
Kay, kung ALG opinion.
We will cross the bridge.
We will cross the bridge, kanang guingon ni sir. Kay, according sa kuwa gahapon, i-post audit maniya nga visitors lag book ang giattach.
Yes, wala, wala, precisely. Since siya ni moto akong gi pasabot ba nga since siya ni assume dari physically naasiya, but sa minutes, lo ipukey nga wala.
Kaya magka contradict yud po sir, kay pag secretary ni Geraldine iya manggi butang dito sa minutes, niya present, niya ang sa kuwa wala.
One ay problema nga, atong angay resulbaron kay ni second siya sa motion, naganaral na siya mga motion napasa.
Wala may set an-an na sir?
Yeah, ato lang gi patsap ang technicality sir.
Namang gay, namang gay na gamay confusion lang baso, atong i-correct, atong tabangan ng usat-usa. Yes, yes. Apil biya'tatanan, oh, yes.
Yes. Sige, sige, sige.
Okay.
Sayang manggood ang atuang pagka-finalista nasionalo niya, sa grassroots, kuwan daheta, piki.
Ubasan lang ta, kung sa ina, ano, gandahan sa to, sundun na to, di na ilan ang buhimobat lang yun, 2016.
Ang balaw
Dino is simplified. Dino is simplify.
Okay, simply by pagayang blawat, parang, there's no wrong for, kani interpretation sa. Yes, sir, wala may ni contradict kanan opinyon.
Ay, usap to, paginun sa D I L G, di na, di na kinanglan. Oo, pero dito binapong, dito ngang ibasahan, kuri sa wala siya.
Oh, okay.
Para this, dead motion siya, wala ini proceed niya sa kan, wala discussion niya to. So, mananute, iputang dito derye, isight kan, dute.
Ah, attach din ako minutes.
Oo.
Nasa sendo na, eh, please. Wala eh, please, please, sweldo. Sayo ka pag justify, basta kay matsunot, blawat, simple kayo, pag justify. Pero, hindi biya ka blawat, pero te, panintong ka, bugnao, inanang, inanong, inanang na.
Mr. Chair, inanang mo, pangutangan kay, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, inanang.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Pangutangan kay, kay, atong pag seros niya sa, ah, sa to, lag book.
Visitors lag book.
Ah, photocopy dito Haji, photocopy.
Wala gaya ni certify.
Ato, katong certified photocopy from derye kuwan, from the original, kesa nag certify ato, wala rapo.
Pasan na dito.
Agregtoran dito.
Asa serious lang.
Ah, seros sa dito siya, ah, wala, wala yung certify ato.
Ang di pangayon sa ato, okay, please, please.
Okay, so, ah, kani po atong i-discuss, ah. Kani, ah, cons, kani po atong ikuwan, if ever, nanasay, ah, D I L G opinyon nga kung di nagid necessary nga kuwan so dapat mabalik, masulod po siya sa minutes, kay, sayang po tiyang presence for the two months nga, wag siya na appeal sa minutes, di ba? Apusay mga, gi pangpasang mga motion. Lagi, but, pero but, sa official record sa atong secretary, wala, gitsiya. Niya nagpasan na pa siya mga resolutions, dagan siya mga legislative actions nga gi panghimu, but wala maofficially carried sa iyang kuwan, for, for that concern, iha. Okay.
Pwede ramang, isa sulat na ko, ako'y specifying nga whether ang ihaang presence will retroact
Okay.
sa August.
Dapat kay, dapat kay, nakakobra na pa siya sweldo August.
Gani ah. Technicality ra good.
Lagi, lagi.
Manatong ika.
Yes, oh, so manasay ato i-correct, oh.
Oo.
Nakunak ng problema pohon, if ever, delete ma kuwan. Okay, wala na, so, pagpaabot ta sa.
Haji, wala gisay tulbagon.
Una dud.
Unay tulbagon, na to secretary, nga non, nga non, diabsinan siya.
Agui.
Wala pa dabsinan, walang gi butang sir.
Gi butang record di mo una.
Kita kadiha nga absensya, nga wala man.
Oo, nga non, o, o, gi butang murek.
Ayoko pangutan ah, kay, have my own reasons.
Okay.
Merkitan.
Okay, so, anymore? Okay, let's go back to the committee report of the honorable Sharif Mazin Hasim.
Hello. So, good afternoon, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Committee report number two one four, subject issue for concern brought out by Mr. Danilo Delgado relative to the non-insurance of clearance or transcript of record of his son Jake Delgado by A M High Colleges. The committee to which was referred the above cited subject which was previously referred to the committee on education conducted an inquiry or consultation with the son of Mr. Danilo Delgado and the rest of the twenty six student temporarily enrolled at Doctor A M M C. Accordingly, they already paid the corresponding fees for the insurance of the T O R. However, until now, it was not signed by the school president, Mrs. Agnes Ortega. In attempt to know, but decide, the committee officially invited them. Unfortunately, only Mr. Delgado show up and the twelve students while Mr. Mrs. Ortega instead to attend the meeting sent a letter requesting the committee to invite the twenty six bats of transferring with their parents and the press people so as she could give her views surrounding the issue. The committee finds it unnecessary and immaterial anymore. The fact that scheduled committee meeting was yesterday, October seventeen. She should have appeared, not the other ways around. Hearing all the reasons and observation, the committee hereby recommends for the twenty six, twenty six student to execute an affidavit of complaint duly notarized and submit the same to the committee for a professional legislative action. I now have here the affidavit of complaint by the twenty six student. Laanadiri, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so what's the recommendation of the committee?
I therefore move for the adoption of committee report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's a motion for the adoption of the committee report, duly seconded by the Honorable Ramos, discussion? Any objection? If not, the motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ah just to encapsulate all the, ah, the, the committee report rendered by the committee on education ah, for the information of everyone, yesterday ah, it was already included in the committee report of the Honorable Mazin Hasim being the chairperson on committee on education. Ah, twelve students appeared, ah, yesterday ah, before us, the Honorable Sabijo, Honorable Ramos, and the sample representation. Hearing those sentiments of the, ah, students from a, ah, former students of the A M High, A M High Colleges who were temporarily enrolled at Doctor Aurelio Mendoza Memorial Colleges. To this, Mr. Chair, ah, we, we are already of receipt of their letter complaint. Ah, the, the, the purpose of requesting them to submit before the Sangguniyang Bayan the letter of complaint against A M High, A M High Colleges for the purpose that we will be, ah, sending that complaint to the Commission on Higher Education. No, because the, the, ah, we are just meddling the situation of the students, ah, against the A M High, A M High Colleges and the ah, the right office to, to answer with is the Commission on Higher Education. So, to this, Mr. Chair, may I request the vice chairman, the vice chairperson on the ah, committee on education, the good gentleman from lower to high to pass a resolution endorsing the letter of complaint of the, of the students ah, who submitted their letter of, ah, letter of complaint before the Sangguniyang Bayan to be endorsed with the office of the Commission on Higher Education respectively. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, ah, the Honorable Sharifin Ramos, the good gentleman from lower to high.
Thank you, ma'am, Honorable Peralba for the commission of good to well for mantag kongres, at kongres. I would like to pass a resolution ah, endorsing the, the committee report number two hundred fourteen, committee on education, culture, and development. On the issue or concern brought out by Mr. Danilo Delgado it un, relative to the non-insurance of clearance or transcript of records of his son Jake Delgado by A M High Colleges. So, move, ah, Mr. Chair.
Second, second, duly seconded by the Honorable Sabijo, discussion? Any objection? Do you know the motion is hereby approved? Apidavit, sir, ah, complaint may endorse.
Complaint including the affidavits because they, they.
Okay, okay.
Honorable Chair.
They executed with affidavit, I think, I think, the twenty six students nagexecute affidavit man to sila, so, those twenty six students who executed ng affidavit kay, mura joint affidavit man na, that will be attached to the resolution
Okay.
endorsing to the chain, the, unsamlang chain.
Committee, Commission on Higher Education.
Commission on Higher Education.
Honorable Chair.
Commission on Higher Education.
Okay, ah, the Honorable Leader.
Students.
Honorable Leader, yes, the Honorable Chong.
Ah, for consideration, I hope that the Honorable Ramos is amenable to automatically change the to, to, to amend some of the wording instead of endorsing the committee report, endorsing the affidavit complaint of the student to higher education. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, anymore, committee report? Okay, other matters, balik, other concerns?
Other matters, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Twenty fifth. Ah, di ba, kuwan manasay?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, dud.
Yes.
So, that will be the day of the awarding ceremony, six P M pa?
Yes.
Ah, okay. Ataas pa, so makasession patanay ba's?
Travel na matanay.
Ata.
Sa buong.
Session na lang ta sa buongga.
Yes, yes.
Ah, wag pa, tawag na, yang isa nasbitali, yang isa tusporuhan na.
But, care, ano sa to? Ano sa to? Kosga, kosga gamay. Kosga gamay, kosga.
Tapos, unsama natungkuwan anit, delete ba, para ang atong mga staff na.
Nana, nana, nana isulti si Honorable Caperic.
Oh, sige.
Care of Counselor Hasim.
Okay, so, napay, ah, sige ah, October twenty five delete na ni, gi hangyo, ang tanan, nga, mo ato, mo ato gi tan tanan, not to receive the award, no, including the, ah, siguro, magdalamo staff.
Staff.
So, tanan dud no, tanan ang atong patuon. Mula'y delete, mo ato.
Tapos ba's, ah, magkuwan po sila no, during sa, during sa, kani, awarding, magkuwan po sila mal uniform?
Kung staff, si ginanaw.
Kung staff, kani, kani, kani uniform nila anit, oh, para ma-recognize sila
Okay, of the record.
Sa management, sa organizer dito nga, mga staff sila sa Sangguniyang Bayan.
Of the record, manginaot lang yung, di delete ma schedule, twenty five ang pagpanganay sa, para makaantod yung. Yes. Yes, yes, oh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty two, katong mga members sa nineteen to twenty two nga mga Sangguniyang Bayan members, atong invite
Oo.
para makaapil sila, including the Honorable Sabijo, mong papa.
Pwede, pwede.
The Honorable Manuel Lito Largo, the Honorable Ino Ferrio. Yes, okay, previous term anisya actually, two thousand nineteen to twenty twenty two. Thank you for that kuwan, ah, sa pagpainom do.
Yang Honorable Dara.
Yeah, yeah, Dara, si RD gani. Yes, oo.
Di sa tong bitaran, don, si? Ah, oh, oh, lagi oy.
Okay, and also napay, gamay nga reminder nga gi pa sa ato ang secretary for the upcoming ka Christmas celebration, ang activities sa ato ang L G U E field, naadri ang pag-decorate sa, derye sa ato ang municipal plaza. Naigi-designate sa atong area no? The office, ah, office color is green and white, moni? Ah, green and white, okay, so ang decor dito, so mag-conceptualize pa mo, o gunsa, and then gavel, pwede report. Sige na, muna lahi sa i-conceptualize ko, what will be the, kasi ato ang concept, o kasi ato ang design sa kuwan, then.
Gavel nga elevated, gong, gong, gong o gavel.
Okay, palyo na lang, conceptualize na, ma Madam Secretary, dayong, tangag budget, kay, sipre budgetan yun na. Kanasa? First week of November, wala na may, gamay na maginag time.
First week sa November?
Next week nabi na.
December guro, di pod.
Basik tunga tungas November or last week na dud? Oo. Mura to early pod ang first week sa November, o gamay na lapo kay time.
Mga second week siguro sa November.
Ato i-suggest nalang kay, mura, gamay lapo kay time.
Naka, nakaginhawa na ang mga barangay officials po, ginapoy, ligapod nga, area.
Oo. Ah, second week na lang siguro, okay, mubot, mubot lapo kayang time i-first week to prepare for that. Basik mahulog sa dinalian pod ang ato ang pagprepare. Okay, wala nilain, announcements, yes?
Halu apodamo ang, krenko na ato derye sa.
Okay.
Biggit, palinkura, di ka kayo?
Ang, ang tulog no, sa imong office? And then. Under warranty? Supplier, okay. Kuwan po na kay, under warranty po po ng.
Ba's, sa, sa concern, sa kuwan Sangguniyang Bayan, kabahin anit, pisay na may emofa five minutes recess, atong hangyo on si engineer, langkulang derye, ipakuan ato kay, kay sa twenty five, wala man ta, so at least kena nga maperyun, mapaayon nila, oh.
Sige, sige. Back to order? Okay, the honorable. One problem. Okay.
That's all. One. The. 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 There is no. There is no. There is no. There is no.
It's a. It's a. It's a. It's a. It's a. Okay. Okay, there's. Oi, time. Before the adjournment. Give me the gloom. It's almost 2024. Basically, it's my term.
Okay, I don't want to hear.
Okay, there is a motion for the adjournment of the 65th regular session. Any seconded motion? Julie seconded. So, the 65th regular session is now adjourned.
Congrats, congrats. Good luck.